Okay, good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, to order. Thank you all for coming. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for whatever you would like to think about. Thank you. If you'd all please join Alderman Cornet in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Cornet. Mr. Crupp, if you'd please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jopgin.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Looks like eight present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. Please remember, our meetings are recorded, and they will be available on the website for viewing later. We're happy you're participating in your city government, and as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place for everyone. I thank you for joining us, especially for the folks in here. If you consider, please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off, simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council on any specific item or public business at the end, please come to the podium. Again, like we usually do, the next person would be standing so I know someone else wants to speak, or for the respective committee chairs, so they know that also. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When addressing the council, please address us as one body and not as any individual. You'll have three minutes, and I know you all will observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator, any update for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
We have eight public hearings this evening, seven under Public Works and one under Finance, so we'll go to Public Works first. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 83rd Street to North Zenith Avenue Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2023-2024 sewer and manhole rehabilitation program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the South Clark Street-Rockingham Road to Black Hawk Creek Rehabilitation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Duck Creek Trail Mill and Overlay Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fifth public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2023 Commercial Alley Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the sixth public hearing on the planned specification form of contract on the estimated cost for the 2023 Residential Alley Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and I open the seventh and final public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost covering the Dos Splash and Play Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next area is Finance. We have one public hearing. Alderman Condon will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name, address, or where you're from, and I'm going to take this opportunity to remind you that this is-
My name is David Ezra Sidran.
Excuse me, I apologize. I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind our audience that this format of the meeting is your time to speak to this issue, and we won't be able to answer any questions for you. It'll appear again later on our agenda.
I couldn't hear much of what you said. May I speak now?
Certainly.
My name is David Ezra Sidran. I've been a resident of the Third Ward for over 30 years. I don't even know where to start. Okay. The fiscal year for the city of Davenport ends next week. Most people don't know that. And this is the public hearing on amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget, which has one week left in it. This is like at 11:59 on New Year's Eve, trying to go back in time and somehow amend your budget and your taxes, and it's nonsense. Why are we amending the budget? Why are we amending the budget for last year? Well, I know why. You know why. It's because you're going to pass a resolution in a few minutes, right? And the resolution you're going to pass, I'm going to read a little bit, I'm not going to take your job, by the way. Mr. Kemp, you get to read the whole thing. You're going to say, "Resolution: Ratifying Emergency Purchase for the Two-Phase Demolition Project from 324 North Main Street to D.W. Zinser Company of Walford, Iowa, in the amount of $1,247,732.81." That's why you got to amend last year's budget. And why? Because funding for this emergency project comes from account 795-2567-5530306024. What account is that? Well, luckily, I can read a chart of accounts. This is the account it's coming from. We all know this account. This account, Project 60024, demolition program. There's one small problem. You can't pay $1 million out of this account because there's $0 in this account. So this is why you have to amend last year's budget to somehow get $1.2 million into this account, right? That's why you got to do it. The question is, as I told you last week, you're now in the stage where you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. We now know who Paul is. Paul is the Zinser Company, D.W. Zinser Company. That's the Paul. $1.247,732.81 million. Now, the question is, is who's Peter? Where are you going to get this $1.2 million? And I got a feeling you're not going to tell me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'll give you a chance to speak if you'd like. This will appear later on our agenda as well.
Okay.
All right. Then I repeat my motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. This public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Okay, now we'll move to the conditions and communications. Anyone? All right, Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be having a Fourth Ward Meeting, June 26th, Monday, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Kepi Building located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds from 6:00 to 7:00. We'll have our Director of Public Works, Nicole Gleason. We'll go over our current road construction and roads that were getting done now and some future ones that are coming up. So I encourage everybody to come between 6:00 and 7:00 on June 26th. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I wanted to thank everyone who came to the Third Ward Meeting last night. We had a long meeting, and we had a lot of meaningful conversations, so I appreciate your being there, everyone. I also wanted to mention that the second party in the park is tomorrow night, starts 5:30 to 7:30. It is in Marquette Park this week. We had a wonderful event last year there, and we're looking forward to having one again. We will again have ice cream and hot dogs, and we ran out last week, so come early and don't come too late. And if you get there, go to the, maybe go there first, and then come enjoy all the booze. So I hope to see you there, and thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. I want to apologize for my tardiness. My mother's in the hospital, and traffic is crazy, crazy, coming from Trinity. And I just want to also say, I do still plan, I'm trying to get together my ward meeting with all the financial people, so making home ownership an option. So it's still not out there. I may have to have a July meeting, even though folks don't have meetings in July, I may have to have one. I'm just trying to get it all together to make it make sense to the general public, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. All right, we'll move to items of discussion. First area is community development, then public safety, Public Works and Finance. Community development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution approving case CP 23-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend the Davenport 2035 Comprehensive Plan by assigning future land use map classifications to the approximately 475 acres of land roughly bound by Sloper Town Road, Hillendale Road, Northwest Boulevard, and 130th Avenue. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving case F 23-05, being the request of Mesa Ridge North Park Mall LLC for a final plat of North Park Office Max Edition, a one-lot subdivision on 2.1 acres located at 320 West Kimberly Road. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Could someone give a brief statement of what this is, and is this going to be the first under the new North Park Mall city center zoning that we voted on?
Laura Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services. So this is just subdividing off the Office Max building itself to sell to a separate individual to facilitate that sale. So I think there is an intent to redevelop that land, although we have not received any final details or plans.
So is that the one that's attached to where the other end? I'm trying to picture. I'm sorry.
So it is near the corner of Northwest Boulevard and Kimberly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So it's just in the same building? They want to do something else in there?
Yeah, they just want to be able to sell the land.
Oh, okay. But is that within the city center?
Yes, it is in that zoning district.
So it'd be kind of the first thing that would be coming under that zoning?
That would be correct.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you want to step up to the lectern and enter that information publicly, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I was just going to clarify. It's the building that's adjacent to Olive Garden. It's bacon.
Can you state your name and address or ward, please?
Jennifer Radloff from Chey Fattery.
Thank you, ma'am.
Representing Mesa Ridge.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 626 Taylor Street to the 180 Zone. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located in the 300 block of West 16th Street to Davis Priority Properties LLC. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number five is a motion approving the appeal to overturn the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to deny case COA 23-18, a request to install vinyl windows at the J. Monroe Parker Fickey House located at 1208 Main Street, a locally designated historic landmark within the College Square Historic District. Please note, council, that a yes vote overturns the Historic Preservation Commission's decision, and a no vote upholds Historic Preservation Commission decision. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Oberg Ramirez. I'm an attorney with Landon Waterman, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Delt 100 Alumni Council, the owners of 1208 Main Street. The home at 1208 Main Street is a locally recognized historic landmark that's located in the nationally recognized College Square Historic District. Because of the home's status as a local historic landmark, the homeowners must secure a certificate of appropriateness from Davenport's Historic Preservation Commission before commencing any repairs that require a building permit. On May 9th, just last month, the Historic Preservation Commission voted to deny Delt 100's application for a certificate of appropriateness for installation of premium vinyl windows. The commission noted several grounds for denial, which I'll discuss in a few moments, but ultimately, the commission feels that vinyl windows are an inappropriate substitute material for the home's existing wooden windows. The commission requests that homeowners install replacement wooden windows. The homeowners now appeal the commission's decision and ask this council to overturn the commission's denial. Davenport Municipal Code provides two criteria for the council to consider regarding whether to overturn the commission's decision. First, this council must ask whether the commission exercised its powers in accordance with law and Davenport ordinance. Second, this council must ask whether the commission's decision was arbitrary and capricious. Looking at our first criteria, the commission failed to exercise its powers in accordance with Davenport Municipal Code for two primary reasons. First, Development and Neighborhood Services staff argue that economic hardship is not a relevant factor in the Certificate of Appropriateness review process. This is incorrect. The Municipal Code plainly states the commission's review standards are to be applied in a reasonable manner, taking into full consideration the issue of economic feasibility. The homeowners at 1208 Main Street cannot afford installation of new custom wooden windows. There are 80 windows at 1208 Main Street. Replacing all of these windows with premium vinyl product will cost homeowners $78,000, which is already an extremely large sum for the homeowners to raise. Replacing the home's 80 windows with wooden windows will cost the homeowners over $190,000, which is $112,000 more than the vinyl product. Second, the code states the commission must approve appropriate plans that will be reasonable for the applicant to carry out, and emphasizes that replacement materials must match original materials when possible. Despite this, the commission has determined that custom wooden windows are the only permissible path forward, regardless of cost, feasibility, or reasonableness. Staff argues that vinyl is a synthetic material that wasn't available in 1881 when the home was built. Requiring that homeowners only utilize materials that were available in 1881 is unreasonable and ignores the modern needs and realities of homeownership. Looking at our second criteria, the commission's denial is arbitrary and capricious for three reasons. First, the commission argues vinyl doesn't respect the historic integrity of the home, but by refusing to allow the homeowners to install these vinyl windows, the commission jeopardizes the entire property. The homeowner's original application for the project was submitted in October of 2022. Now, eight months later, the condition of the windows has continued to worsen. Homeowners have noted water damage throughout the home, which is impacting the home's ceilings and the historic interior molding. The longer this application is denied, the more the home's structural integrity is compromised. Second, the commission's blind adherence to historic preservation jeopardizes the health and well-being of the home's 14 tenants. Several windows are missing glass panes. Most are deteriorating, exposing the home and its tenants to the elements. The homeowners owe their tenants duties as a landlord. By refusing to approve the homeowner's project, the commission is prioritizing historic window preservation over tenant safety. Lastly, the home directly across from 1208 Main Street, the Dr. Agnes High Palmer House, has vinyl windows. The Agnes High Palmer House is admittedly not a local historic landmark, but it is located within a nationally recognized historic district. If vinyl windows are appropriate for a home within a nationally recognized historic district directly across from 1208 Main Street, then vinyl windows should be appropriate at 1208 Main Street. For these reasons, Delt 100 respectfully requests that this council grant its appeal and overturn the commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gripp. I'm going to apologize, it's going to take a little bit of time to go through, and I wanted to, first of all, thank Delt 100 Alumni LLC for being stewards of this house for a very long time. They, I believe, were the owners, or some of the people who are still owners, were the owners when it was listed as a local landmark, which makes it of higher significance back in the night, about 20 years ago. So, you know, why are we here? Why is this house important? Why is there an issue with this? A little bit about the house. The Parker Monroe Fickey House is the second-largest second-imperial house in the state of Iowa. It is second in size only to Terrace Hill, which is the governor's mansion. It was the Hubble, that was the Hubble Mansion. It is, it was designed by a local architect, a man who in fact started as a carpenter and built this magnificent house. Back in 1881, it was finished. And sometimes when you talk about why is this building, why does it matter, that can be hard to address. It is an outstanding and the highest order of that style of second-imperial architecture in the state. It is the top of the top, never to be replicated again. There was, it is so important that back in 1933, there was something called the Historic American Buildings Survey. This was before we had the National Register and the process we have for looking at historic buildings, and they went around America and they documented important buildings. And they came to Davenport as part of that. There were only nine properties in the entire, this is a national, this is a national survey. There were only nine properties out of the entire city of Davenport, and this was one of them. It is, it is the only second-imperial house in that survey. The half survey is recognized as a significant step in historic preservation in America, and again, predating our current system of recognition of historic buildings. As, as the attorney said, in considering the appeal from the HBC, there are two factors that this council was supposed to be looking at. Did it exercise its powers appropriately, the commission, and follow the guidelines established by the ordinance? And was the decision capricious and arbitrary? Economic hardship is, can be a consideration, but it is not a consideration for this council. Reasonableness is part of that ordinance, if you go back and read it, and the standards, the Secretary of Interior standards, the standards which generally our HPC follows are to be taken into a reasonable consideration. But there have been, there have been problems in, I believe, in the approach to the windows, and they are very significant. Windows are a very significant part of any historic building, and especially one that's very, very significant. And the Secretary of Interior, who sort of sets the guidelines for the country on, you know, preservation, it is the, sort of the gold standard, and it is from where descends a lot of the language around how local commissions view their work. It talks about windows as one of the few parts of a building serving as both an interior and exterior feature. Windows are nearly always an important part of the historic character of a building. In most buildings, windows also compromise a considerable amount of the historic fabric of the wall plane, and thus are deserving of special consideration in a rehabilitation project. So I wanted to move this forward a little bit. I wanted to ask staff who were involved with this, if they, I believe that was Laura and Man, if you could come and, to me, I've got some questions I'd like to ask you about the application process and where we've been with the building.
Good. Laura Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services.
Ma'am, Laura, Development and Neighborhood Services.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. So I would ask you first, just as context, what other projects relating to the building have come before the HPC and staff in the past few years?
There have been two in the last few years, well, three components. So the first one would be complete tuck pointing and brick replacement where necessary on the building. There was also a complete porch reconstruction, and then, most recently, a roof replacement.
And can you talk to me how that, how that went, how that went, those projects went, and how you worked, how you worked with the applicant?
Sure. The first projects that we received an application for were related to the tuck pointing and the roof, or the porch reconstruction. We contacted the contractor for additional information, met him on site. We looked for additional information, full understanding, determined the condition of the porch, talked through that, and then ultimately got to the point where the commission did approve both those projects. One with, just we'd wanted to double-check the color and size of the bricks that would be replacing it, as well as the type of mortar that was used, so it wouldn't impact the overall integrity of the building. And then the porch reconstruction, same thing, we just wanted to make sure that it was being replicated in the correct way.
Okay, great. I am somewhat concerned by the applicant's application in that there is a, there's a thread that seems to say the staff and commission didn't work with the client, and it was, I believe the commission was described as being arbitrary in their vote. And I think the appeal also says one of the reasons the commission denied it was because the owner didn't want to apply for any funds is, do you remember any of that about the appeal? Could you speak to that?
So early on, when this project came before the commission and an application was submitted, staff reached out to the State Historic Preservation Office and notified them of the nature of the request and got them in contact with the applicant in terms of grant and tax credit financing opportunities. Now, the commission does not vote based on the financing of projects. They vote based off of the review criteria established in the Historic Preservation Ordinance.
So it would be up to the applicant if they wish to pursue any of that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you don't, that does not pass through you at all?
No.
Okay. How did the staff and commission engage with the applicant regarding the discussion of the windows? How did that go?
Staff received a initial application in October after initial review was deemed to be incomplete, and they were provided the additional details and information that would be required for the commission to make a complete vote. And then, over the next several months, we engaged in dialogue. Ultimately, they did a work session before the commission to introduce the project and conducted some further research, and then ended up at the May meeting for formal review.
All right. And I believe you also had a, you did a workshop during that time? Is that correct?
That's correct. In March, the State Historic Preservation Office sent two representatives to Davenport to give a presentation on historic windows and replacement and preservation that was held here publicly.
And was the public invited to that? Or was, what was the purpose of the workshop, I guess?
So the general purpose was to fully engage and educate with the commission on windows specifically. It had been at the commission's request to gain additional information, and the State Historic Preservation Office is piloting more direct outreach, and so they offered to come directly and for an in-person presentation. That was a meeting open to the public. It was publicized by the city and is actually still available online in both video, and their slides are also available.
Okay. So part of that was then the, an effort for, to make sure the commission understood windows in their place in historic preservation, is that, would that be true?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So what was the response? You had asked, you'd asked the applicant to document the windows. What was the response to that request?
The general response is that that would be a burdensome and difficult process for them to undertake.
Were there any other options offered besides, so there, they seem to be, they, in the, in the- Were there any other options offered besides, so there, they seem to be, they, in the, in the appeal before us, they talk about just all wouldn't replace the windows with wood or replace them with vinyl. Was there any other conversation about repair, which is often the thing that's done with windows after a complete survey is done of every, each and every window?
Yeah. So, our, our general request was to get an understanding of actually how deteriorated all the windows were to determine if something could be repaired or if it truly did need to be replaced. We never really got a, a full understanding, other than the applicant saying that it's about 75% of each facade. That was what was there in the application, was in need of replacement. We did receive a few photos. We had suggested more up close photos that we could tell. We do know it's a larger building, and we were, we're looking at solutions that would be a little bit easier to obtain. But in order to determine what should be replaced, what shouldn't, that's really where we got stuck and never really fully got past that part. Now, we-
So, there was a photograph there, excuse me, that showed the windows number. You couldn't, that wasn't, that is not sufficient? Is that correct?
It's too far away. You cannot tell the quality of, of the windows from that far away. It did give us a better understanding of how many windows there were. There had been some confusion on exactly how many windows were there because we were receiving conflicting information between some of the information that had been provided by different individuals. And, and so, yet we haven't, we hadn't, didn't really get to a place where we could discuss any kind of general compromise. We were informed that the request was for full replacement, 100% replacement with vinyl windows.
No discussion further?
No.
Okay. All right. Now, there also, their application talks about several other buildings across the city where vinyl windows were used in a historic building, or a couple of them they mentioned. So, how, why is this, why is this different? How, how is this building different?
So, in particular, related to the building across the street, that is not a local landmark, as, as the attorney had mentioned. So, local landmarks are a higher level of standard. So, the commission does not have any regulatory authority over window replacements and just general national historic districts. That is outside their purview. So, the local landmarks are held to a higher standard and a higher priority for preservation in the city.
Okay. And the other, there was another one at Ripley Street that I think was referenced also?
Sure.
Was there, what was the situation with that?
So, that was back from 2006. In my research of that, because it has been a while, is that the gentleman that had purchased the house did not know that windows needed to go to Historic Preservation Commission, relied on contractors that did not pull building permits. 70% of the windows had been replaced with vinyl windows at that point. The commission denied the remaining 11 windows in hopes of preserving the original ones with, or I should say, it was unclear at that time whether or not they were original and what their current state was. And so, it, it did get denied by the commission and then was overturned by the council.
And that was before you were here? So, you were-
Actually, I was here.
Right, you were. But you weren't working, I think, in this role?
Not in this, not in my current role. I was, I was planning-
I get it. So, just, thank you for doing that research. Did you feel like that you had all the pertinent information about the windows? Was it shared with staff and commission prior to the request, or we want to do it this way? We want to do the vinyl?
No, I don't feel like we had, but we needed to make a, a decision.
And again, because-
So, we weren't given the, the information related to the existing quality and state of the windows in terms of their state of disrepair or, or whether they could be repaired. We also didn't have a great comparison between the proposed vinyl windows versus the existing to determine how big of a visual impact that change would be.
Okay. All right. I don't believe I, I have anything of you right now. Again, I just have a few comments in the end. Thank you. And you, if you want to sit down, I don't believe I have any other. I want to, I do want to stress that we, we ask our Historic Preservation Commission to do its job, and it is a very tough job. It is a very difficult task that citizens volunteer to do. And in this case, it was a unanimous decision. It's not something that I believe this commission takes lightly. As far as the documentation went, it seemed that the building had most of its original windows, and that seems to, to be the case. The concern and the issue with how do, how you replace, and there's another thing. There's, there's replace, there's also repair. And this didn't seem to have much consideration in this case. When, the, the issue with replacing windows in a, is very, 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 very significant building like this one is that when you replace with vinyl, because it is weaker, it often means that the, the look of the window, and again, as I read, the windows are a very significant part, considered a significant part of a historic building. This building is under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission, so they have to review this. And replacement of vinyl is not encouraged because it does replace inevitably the width of the sash and the width of the frame. Typically, the frames sit inside the existing window opening, and it has to be made thicker because, wider, because it's not strong enough to last. These windows that are, that are, they're talking about removing our plate glass, heavy plate glass. They are, this would be old growth lumber because this house is built in 1881. And this will, it is not wood that could probably be replicated. The idea of repair is one that I'm, I'm sorry that I don't feel like the applicant perhaps looked at as much as they might be able to, if they didn't feel like they got advice to do this. Again, windows can be, many historic windows can be repaired and remain for another, how many years? 140 years. Vinyl will go away in 20 years, maybe, if we're lucky, because it'll have to be replaced. And it will be, and it will be, you know, even, and impossible to reverse in many cases when you're replacing with vinyl. I, I would hope that this, this council would think again, what we were, what we were asked to do. We were asked to do here is if we were to consider if the commission exercised its powers appropriately and followed the guidelines established by the ordinance itself. And I would say that I believe they did. I'm sure it was a difficult decision. It is always difficult on a commission to deny someone. It's, it's a very difficult thing to do. And I, and I do believe they followed their, they exercised their powers, and I do believe they followed their guidelines. And I do not believe it was capricious and arbitrary. This commission took a long time looking and learning, inviting the public to learn with them, looking for compromise, as did staff in this decision. And so, I would please ask my fellow council people to uphold this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. We'll go to Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. So, the attorney from Lane Waterman said that there's now 14 tenants in the building. So, that means there's 14 apartments, which means that the building has had, it sounds like, substantial modification over the past years. And as sensitive as we are to the well-being of tenants in the state, and if there's water damage happening, if there's panes missing, and we don't have information about how many can be repaired versus replaced, I'm, I'm looking forward to more information on this, but I'm especially concerned about, there's already been high modification, and, and I'm concerned about the tenants, especially if some of these windows do not open. And having grown up in a very old building, a lot of those wooden windows don't open well. So, anyway, thank you.
Alderman Condon?
The reason we have historic districts and historic buildings is because our history is important, and we're nothing without our history and our traditions. It's who we are as a community. And in this instance, being associated with an institution like Palmer College, and in the instance of it being a fraternity, I'm a little disappointed that the folks don't recognize their own significance because without the college, you know, the community wouldn't be what it is. And without that house, the, I, I think the fraternity itself would say that, that, that they're not really the, the same without that house. The, it's a, it's a big part of the tradition. It's a big part of the significance. It's, it's a big part of the thing that creates the through line that is tying all of this together. So, with, with their unwillingness to, I don't know what word they use, but go through and audit their own windows and, and do everything they can and show that they're demonstrating, that they're willing to do all that they can to preserve their piece of history. It gives me, yeah, a lot of disappointment and have a hard time supporting this action.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. We'll go back to Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. I will be very quick. Is the attorney, could you come forward, please, ma'am? Thank you. Yes. I just have one small question.
Sure.
So, you had mentioned 14 tenants, but this, this is a, this is a fraternity. It's a sort of communal living, correct?
Correct.
They're not apartments. They're 14 people living in the building. Is that fair to say?
From what I understand, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the question I have. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, I've got a couple, a couple of questions for our staff, followed by a couple of questions for Ms. Oberg Ramirez. So, we'll start with staff, please. How long has the Delta One Hundred Alumni owned the Fickie House?
A little over 20 years.
Okay. And have they made other improvements since they've, they've owned it? Other improvements to the, to the building?
Not, not significant improvements to the exterior. This would be the tuck pointing and at porch where the most recent, there was a building permit issued for some exterior improvements to the yard to the north of the building, which I believe was to install the pools in the 83, in the 90s, I think there was some. But we can get you additional information related to building permits associated with that building.
What I'm really curious about is, is if they've had to go through the, the process with HPC in their 20 years of ownership? Have they gone through this process with any of the improvements that they've made to the property? And if you don't know that off the top of your head, then certainly we'll, we can wait for that information before next week.
We can do that research and get that information to you.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have for you. And ma'am, Ms. Oberg Ramirez, if I could just ask you a couple of questions? So, I guess I'm, I'm curious about the tax credits and if your, your client has applied for historic tax credits for this project?
Sure. So, the homeowners do have a history of seeking grant relief, applying for tax credits. They have been unsuccessful. I don't think they've ever been successful in their over 20 years of ownership. The problem with a lot of the grants or tax credits available is that they, they have strict eligibility requirements, from what I understand. So, for instance, if an entity is the applicant, they have to be organized as a not-for-profit organization. That is not the case here. A specific problem with tax credits is that while they're great and offer tax relief on the back end, they don't help to allay the upfront cost of the project. So, while there may be a tax opportunity there on the back end, it wouldn't help the ownership group come up with the money they need now to initiate the project. Another significant concern of the ownership group, if they were to get some kind of grant funding or tax credit, a lot of times you have to turn the project over to a state-sponsored contractor or work with the contractor on a certain list from the state, from what I understand. And that, in the ownership's experience and understanding, tends to increase costs. They prefer to work with their contractor that they have retained instead of kind of hand over control of the project.
So, the answer is they have not applied for this state historic tax credits?
They have applied in the past. They have never received them.
For this project?
For this project, no.
Okay. Is there a willingness to apply for state historic tax credits for this project?
It's something I can take back to the ownership, but at the current time, from what I understand, no, the ownership group's not willing to do that.
Okay. Is, is there a willingness from the ownership group to do evaluation of all of the windows to evaluate for repair versus replace?
I would say their overall sentiment about that would be no. The contractor, Casey Haas, has examined the windows and does feel that the extent of the deterioration is far too significant to warrant replacement. And Casey is here tonight. If there's any questions any of you would like to address to him as well, specifically about the, the project itself.
Okay. Well, those are my questions for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You know, just a, just a comment about the Fickie Mansion. It is one of the most significant, probably the most significant house in the city of Davenport, but one of the most significant buildings. And I think that the, the property owner bears some responsibility to, to maintain that integrity and make sure that we continue to have that historic house in the city of Davenport. I am hopeful that the property owners will come to the table and look at this as a partnership and evaluate the different funding options that the state of Iowa has for historic credits. I, I have some faith that as a good community partner, that they would come to the table and have those conversations. But if they're, if they're unwilling to, to have those conversations, I, you know, we'll evaluate the cri, the, the two piece of criteria that we have to evaluate, and we'll make a decision next week on whether we stand with Historic Preservation Commission or we overturn it. Seeing no one else, that item will stay on the discussion agenda. And I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our community development agenda.
Thank you. I move that items one through four be placed on consent agenda, and item five, stay on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jopson will discuss. Alderman Jopson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. First item under the public safety agenda is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule Five, Four Way Stop Intersections of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding Utah Avenue at Telegraph Road thereto. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on the listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read these before asking for comment. First, Lane Folker, run on the first 2300 block of Ripley Street, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, July 1, 2023. Closure, Ripley Street from West Dover Court to West Rush Home Street. Next, Tim Shea, Belcourt, Fourth of July Block Party, 6123 Belcourt, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Tuesday, July 4, 2023. Closure, Belcourt from East 61st Street to Parkview Lane. And last, Quad City Arts River Sense Festival of Fine Art, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street, 8:00 a.m. Friday, September 15, 2023, through 7:00 p.m. Sunday, September 17, 2023. Closure, East 11th Street from Jersey Ridge Road to Hillcrass Avenue. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, a motion approving noise variance requests on the listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for a comment. First, Tim Shea, Belcourt, Fourth of July Block Party, 6123 Belcourt, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Tuesday, July 4, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Next, Danview Inn Bix Party, 410 East 2nd Street, 8:00 a.m. Saturday, July 29, 2023, through 12:00 a.m. Sunday, July 30, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. And last, Quad City Arts River Sense Festival of Fine Art, Lindsay Park, 2200 East 11th Street, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, September 16, 2023, and 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Sunday, September 17, 2023. Outdoor music band over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this, these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on. And then last, we have item number four, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. Under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. I'll read each of these and then make a comment on item B. Have the Garrison, 131 West 2nd Street, new license with outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, The River's Edge, 700 West River Drive- Next, the Rivers Edge, 700 West River Drive, license upgrade, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then Red Hawk Golf Course, 6364 Northwest Boulevard, license upgrade with outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then there are those items under Section B, the annual license renewals with outdoor area renewals, as noted, all listed for your review. I will not read those. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? And I would entertain a motion to place all four items under public safety on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is the third consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.34 entitled Department of Public Works and Section 2.30.080 entitled City Administrator Additional Duties of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, to state again the existing ability to line operational areas with organizational resources as needed. And before I ask for comment, I believe Alderwoman McGinnis would like to read her amendment to this.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. So the, as the, the original change read, any other department head not mentioned above. My amendment is any other department head not mentioned above whose appointment, removal and supervision is not otherwise specified in the Davenport Municipal Code.
Thank you. Now I'll ask for anyone from the public comment. Council.
Yeah, is she, are you going to make your amendment now? I want to give people a chance to speak.
Sure.
If she wants to make her amendment, we can do that.
So I will make that amendment now and I will re-read it again. So my amendment is to this, any other department head not mentioned above whose appointment, removal and supervision is not otherwise specified in the Davenport Municipal Code.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call on that, Tom, or just voice vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. That passes and that will be on next week's agenda. Item number two is the first consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.28 entitled Surface Strains of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by amending subsection 13.28.030 for language cleanup and clarity. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the West 83rd Street and North Zenith Avenue Extension Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2023-2024 sewer and manhole rehabilitation program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the South Clark Street, Rockingham Road to Blackhawk Creek Rehabilitation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Duck Creek Trail Mill and Overlay Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2023 Commercial Alley Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2023 Residential Alley Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Dos Splash and Play Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? I would just like to say it's nice to see this project finally moving forward and I know there's a lot of folks that are going to be happy to see this getting done. So I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on that. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding a contract for the Village East Davenport Lighting Project, the Davenport Electric Contract Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $261,597.99. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Jobson, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as you were thankful for the last, last item, I'm thankful the staff fallen on this item and getting this one moving. I know Village is no longer within the Sixth Ward. Alderman Kelly, that's, that's your purview now, but it's good to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I'm just wondering, is the Smith contributing anything to this? I can't remember. No? So it's street lighting? Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a resolution accepting work completed under the FY 2023 Seal Coat Road Rehabilitation Program by CDMI Concrete Contractors in the amount of $761,039.08. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation, Safe Streets and Roads for all Grant Program assistance to improve safe multimodal transportation throughout the city. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a motion approving a contract for engineering services for the Modern Woman Park Fire Suppression System Replacement Project with IMEG Corporation in the amount of $54,900. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 14 is a motion approving the purchase of a Krafo SS125 crack sealer from Logan Contractor Supply in the amount of $63,049.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 15 is a motion approving change order number one to NJ Miller in the amount of $81,145 for the East Central Park Avenue, Brady Street to Pershing Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 16 is a motion considering a waiver, temporary deferral of sidewalk installation for the River Bend Food Bank Project located at 4010 Kemble Drive. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Yes, sir. I move that all items except for one be put on the consent agenda and everything.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And the agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area and last area is Finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will discuss. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one in Finance is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Sir, please step to the lectern, state your name once again and where you're from.
What's the resolution? Where's the money coming from?
I appreciate, I appreciate your passion, but could you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
I apologize and I appreciate your passion, but if you could please just state your name and address as we do.
My name and address hasn't changed since a few minutes ago. It's David Esrecidran. I've lived in the Third Ward for 30-plus years.
Okay. I appreciate your cooperation and your decorum.
Right.
Please proceed.
Look, you're going to amend the fiscal budget retroactively. I suspect you're trying to raise $1.2 million to put in this account. I just want to know where you're getting the $1.2 million. Can anybody please tell me how you're going to move this money into this account? That's all I'm asking. Who is the Peter that you're robbing to pay Paul? That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address item number one? Seeing no one, I'll turn to council. First, we have Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask that this be put on discussion.
I understand. And Alderwoman, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if maybe our CFO could come up and speak to this item, just asking a
Valerie Merritt, CFO.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, so, question's been asked. Why are we amending the budget and do we have money to do so?
Yes. State law does require that we not exceed the budget in any category that's been certified. So obviously with these expenses, we do need to increase the budget just to allow for that flexibility and to build in some capacity. To answer the question of where the funding is coming from, as you know, the fiscal year ends on June 30, but the work doesn't stop there. It takes us through about the end of August to formally close out the fiscal year. At that time, so usually about late August, we begin the process of balancing each fund individually and we apply any surpluses to any deficits. That is the best practice and that's, that's been the practice that's been in place for many, many years. Through a recent review of our major operating revenues, your major operating revenues, everything is tracking along just fine. Most of those are exceeding your projections. So I do anticipate there being sufficient surpluses in late August to cover these costs without any disruption to your financial policies or your reserve or liquidity targets.
So in summary, our general fund balance will stay within our normal guidelines of 70% to 25% of the operating budget. We're in no, no risk of this item affecting that. Is that correct?
That is correct. I anticipate all of your policies remaining intact and in meeting or exceeding those.
Thank you very much for that information. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Ms. Merritt, if you, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was trying to catch you. Thank you. I did have, if you could walk us through a couple of things that I think might also help in the discussion. So, and I'm probably going to get some of these terms wrong, so you correct me if I don't get them correct, if I don't do it correctly. So my understanding is that we have a responsibility, our fiscal year ends June of 30th, but anything that, and we're, there are bills and we know, we all know that in the last 30 days, there have been, there's have been a significant incident as, that happened right at the end of our fiscal year. But we're, and we're probably going to be paying for things beyond the end of the fiscal year, but where do those, those funds have to go back when we do our final accounting of our fiscal year, which ends June 30th? They have to be put in, they have to be put in this fiscal year. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under governmental accounting standards, any work or contract that's entered into during the fiscal year, the cost has to be booked back to that fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And so, and so, and as, as you said to Alderman Jobson, because the budget is so large and there are many moving parts to any city, typically cities don't, they don't, they don't reconcile their budgets from the last fiscal year until a couple of months after. Is that correct?
That's correct. We'll have invoices still trickling in in early August that still need to be applied back to the current fiscal year and that, that will be invoices related to anything just standard business.
Correct. Now, I did have another question. So this is a, this we would consider an operating emergency? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that, can you talk a little bit about that term?
Yeah, that is a term that is provided for in the municipal code. Under Finance in the Purchasing Section, and that's where these purchasing provisions have come from that are specific to an operating emergency.
Okay. And have there been others this year? Have there been other operating emergencies?
Certainly. I would say with a government our size, a city our size, there are certainly operating emergencies that come up from time to time that do require us to exercise those provisions. I think a great example that we could all relate to is at our water pollution control plant. Occasionally we'll have an equipment failure there. That's not something that we can await on, so we'll usually just move forward under these provisions to repair that.
And what would happen if we said, we're not going to vote for this? What would happen to the city? What would be the result?
If we did not approve this budget amendment, we would be out of compliance with state code and, and we would likely have an audit finding for that.
And that, and what was, what could that lead to possibly? I'm not asking you to speculate, but.
Yeah.
But it hurt our bond rating, for instance. Could it?
I would say that our bond rating agencies do pay very close attention to the auditor's opinions, their formal opinions that they prepare. So I would say that they would, they would certainly take that into consideration, but I can't speculate on, on what they would do.
So, you know, from a ethical standpoint, and you, it's a material, I think we consider this a material difference, that's a million dollars, as I understand it, in our, in our ordinance?
Yeah, we have determined as a city that anything that's over a million dollars would require a material disclosure. So likely that would be something, if, if we had a $3 million finding, which is essentially what this would, would turn out to, that would be something that we would need to disclose to our rating agencies and likely to the SEC.
Okay. So it's, it is, it is part of our requirement as being a responsible city to do this and the fact that it came at the end of our fiscal year is, it came at the end of our fiscal year and so we have to move quickly on this. Is that correct?
That's correct. The amendment would have to be adopted prior to June 30th for it to be effective with the state.
All right. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Director Merritt? Thank you. So, so the question was asked, we've got $3 million in this amendment. Could you please explain what this $3 million is going to provide us to be able to pay for, for bills that have already been incurred as it relates to the building collapse?
Can you, can you say your question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 no problem. Could, could you please explain what some of this $3 million is meant to cover for bills that are going to come due quickly on all this?
Yeah, certainly. So the actual formal budget amendment that's in front of you, there's $500,000 that's allocated for public safety and there's another 2.5 million that's in general government. Those are anticipated just to build in capacity and flexibility to cover any known costs that we have at this time. Known costs such as the public safety response that was part of, part of this, engineering contracts that have been entered into, and then obviously the demolition item that is, that is on your agenda.
So the demolition is included in this $3 million?
It is.
And this also includes the contract with the two companies that are going to be doing the investigations?
It's all known contracts that we've entered into at this time.
I did not realize that, that item three was also included in the, the $3 million. Okay. I'm sorry. I, I didn't understand that.
No, that's okay.
So item number three is just the ratification, like you say, for the demolition project itself, but the, the actual cost of the demolition is in this $3 million?
Yes. The $3 million includes everything that we know of to date.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to speak to this. Sir, you came to our last meeting and I had a chance to meet with you yesterday and you speak with emotion and I, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I apologize. I'm addressing you, but I'm not asking you to speak and at this time it's our turn to speak. So if you wish, you could have a seat. I understand. I'll speak loudly and clearly. So, so you speak with emotion and I was just saying that I'm an emotional guy right now. I'm, I'm all emotion, so I appreciate your emotion. The larger landscape of the situation is our sound conservative budgeting practices have put the city of Davenport in a strong position. We're more resilient than we've been in a long time. And what that means is we can both, as a city, put ourselves in a position to reach for opportunity to protect our future and that also means that we can guard our city opportunity to protect our future and that also means that we can guard our city from the unexpected as recognized by our improved bond rating and other outside parties. Now, this most recent tragedy perhaps puts the greatest hurt on us in memory, but it's not the only tragedy or unforeseen event in my brief tenure. We, as a city, can do two things at the same time. In the face of a tragedy, we can reflect, ask ourselves tough questions, bring about change, and we can make wrongs right. But I also stand with confidence that my city will continue forward and face this tragedy soberly, with a big heart, and move forward with competence, level-headedness, and professionalism that put us in that position to begin with. Your outrage is not inappropriate. It gives voice to the emotion of the moment and admittedly from where we sit, that's perhaps the hardest thing for us to do. It's the hardest thing for me to do and if you're hurting, I'm hurting too. But, I would be remiss if I did not loudly give my vote of confidence to our staff who have done a great job leading us through this situation. I'm proud of Davenport and for other people following the situation, it's okay to be proud of Davenport too. This is a tough moment, but I'm grateful personally for the leadership that we have and for their ability to do this simple budget procedure to keep us in compliance with the state. So, that's what I have to share about that issue. Seeing no one else, item number one may allow, yes, please, Mayor.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. We do budget amendments every year. We have been recognized for decades in our financial operations. We have had a bond increase for the first time in twenty years. Our financial department, our city council, our staff, foresees and through their conservative budget processes, has the ability to adapt and be resilient and when things happen, as this tragedy happened, as other things as Mr. Condon said, we are able to adapt. This is not unusual for us doing budget amendments and, and adapting our finances because of the way we have been recognized and the credit goes to the staff and Ms. Mallory and our city administrator for making sure and through the council to oversight, to have the oversight to ensure our financial situation is in a great place and it's been recognized by outside agencies through accreditation processes. So, I just wanted to also state that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Item number one may stay on discussion. Item number two is a resolution approving the renewal of general and auto liability property and workers' compensation insurance as well as related professional services for fiscal year 2024 with multiple insurance companies in the amount of one million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? Anyone from council? Number two will move on. And item number three is a resolution ratifying the emergency purchase for the two-phase demolition project of 324 North Main Street to DW Zinzer Company, Inc. of Walford, Iowa in the amount of one million two hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number three? Please step to the lectern, state your name and where you're from, please.
Ron Swainer, Davenport, Long Grove, Rock Island. I have one question. Who had the authority to hire this company as we're now approving? Who has the authority in the city to approve demolition like that so quickly? That's my question to the council. That's it.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, I'll open it up to the council. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. Could someone from whoever is appropriate from staff talk about the emergency demolition process and how these, how this happens a little differently and perhaps how the regular demolition process happens as well?
Thank you. Yes, as everyone knows, unseen or unforeseen events happen, so our code has an ordinance in it to say what happens in emergencies. This is an operating emergency and we have very specific procedures on what happens and essentially if there are items over a hundred thousand dollars, they will come to the council for ratification. If they're under that, they will not, but you will get a transmit a letter informing of you of these things. But, the short answer is the CFO is allowed to make these decisions in order to respond to the emergency. We just can't let, you know, certain things require quick responses.
I believe some other examples would be in the past that are, that are operating this way might be?
Well, for instance, it could be like the derecho a few years ago as an example, but it could be something a little more mundane like something happening to a digester down at the water pollution control plant that we need to get after right away and get repaired.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much, Chair. There's a word in here that we don't see very often and that you mentioned, Corporate Counsel Warner, and it's ratification versus approval. Could you please explain the difference of ratification as it relates, rather than it comes to city council for approval?
Sure. Yeah. Ratification is that the action has already been taken and oftentimes the money has already been spent and it comes to council to ratify or approve after the fact. And again, it's driven by the time urgency.
So, approval would be, to approve the money being spent ahead of time as opposed to after it's already been?
I don't know what you're saying.
It's all right. Never mind.
Well, thank you both. Alderman Jobin?
Thank you. I guess I'll take a bite at that apple. So, just for clarification, if we had this known expense and it was coming to us, we would approve. Is that a correct way of thinking it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, like many items on your agenda, they're anticipated, we have time and, and they go on your agenda for approval.
Okay. And since we couldn't anticipate this and there's costs, we have to hence ratify?
Correct.
Tracking? Okay, cool. And then my last question is, just because we ratify this resolution, does that prevent us from seeking some sort of reimbursement for this cost later on and do we have sources to potentially, a lot of times we use the term make us financially whole or are there opportunities for that?
Correct. That's an excellent point. Certainly in this case, there is an avenue to pursue to try to recoup that money and try to get it back.
Alderwoman Lee, one more time, briefly?
Are you talking about the presidential request or are we talking about from the?
I'm talking about the property owner.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else, item number three will move on. Below on our agenda, we have listed for you our purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand. We don't read each of those individually at the meeting, but they are listed there for your information. Alderman Cornet, would you please set our finance agenda?
Certainly. I move that items two and three be placed on the consent agenda and item one be held on the discussion agenda.
There's a motion? There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Understand. That concludes finance.
No, I oppose.
One no.
And the rest are ayes.
For the discussion agenda?
Or is it consent?
Thank you. That's going to conclude finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet. Next, are there any other ordinances, motions, resolutions? There are none for tonight. Next item, is there any public with business? I'll remind everybody, if you have any public, please come to the podium, microphones above you, let, love to know your name, order, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have three minutes to discuss items other than what was already discussed on the agenda. So, if it's a budget issue, we've already discussed that. Please.
Ron Swainer, Davenport, Long Grove, Rock Island. We have limited the people's ability to speak here by forty percent from five minutes to three. We also, according to the news today, have two aldermen that are limited on how they do their jobs. Wow. To take away another forty percent of the people that voted is just unbelievable. Please, a lot of questions. Lot of unanswered for a council. Let me read something off the website here. I pulled up today. Official duties of city council: pass ordinances, set policies, approval of annual budgets, contract zoning. The second one, attend all council meetings and address issues and concerns of the community. Three, respond to the constituents' concerns. That's the way we feel about that. We have a situation here that forever is going to stain this city. It flows with blood. Three victims in the city's. Are they failures? Are they, what are they? You can get a hundred different answers right now, but the quickness we tore it down, we know one thing for a fact. Until we know absolutely sure why that building failed, one hundred percent, it should have never been tore down because doing it that quickly, saying, "Well, it's a safety", but it's also a safety thing to understand what caused it. If we don't know a hundred percent, how are we going to protect our citizens in the future? Good question. If we're going to stymie this council to where a councilperson has to take three or four days for something that should have took thirty minutes, we need some answers. You know, I know the BICs is coming up. We need to get that thing down so that, you know, we got thousands coming. That's not appropriate, but people ask me, "Is that why they did it so quick? Because of BICs and RAGBRAI?" I don't know. But, people have a ton of questions. You're supposed to address our concerns. I hope to God the city council does not get reelected. Our concerns, our values of this city, most of you up here, you may say different things, you've done wonderful things, but this is a permanent stain and I think we need to change the direction than we have. You know? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
David Esrusidran, Third Ward citizen for thirty years. I'm simply going to read an article published by Iowa Public Radio yesterday. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. I hope it stung. "Davenport Will Publicly Release Contracts With Investigative Firms." The city of Davenport has hired two firms to look into the causes of the collapsed building that killed three people, but it won't let the public review the contracts. Davenport Alderman Judith Lee says she only heard about the contract while reading the news. She told Iowa Public Radio the city should release it. Quote, "Of course it should be public. It's being paid for by public funds." Close quote. Fellow Davenport Alderman Derek Cornet wrote in an email he too had not been given the contract. Davenport Chief Strategy Officer Sarah Ott announced the contract last week.
Sir, please refrain from names.
What?
Please refrain from saying the names. Thank you.
I'm simply.
Carry on.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Davenport Chief Strategy Officer announced the contract last week. She did not offer an explanation of why the city is withholding it from public view. It's unknown what the contract will cost, what the scope of its work will be, and whether there is a timeline for its work. It is the lack of transparency in the city, the city council, the city staff, complete lack of transparency.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Christine Urbane, Davenport. I have a few things. My questions are obviously rhetorical because they're obviously answered already by what has happened. When somebody doesn't show up to court, do we not get a warrant? Yes, we do, but this guy didn't. Okay. Yeah, they're not going to answer that, but that's okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, please refrain from yelling out. Ma'am, just address to us, please. Thank you. Ma'am, please. Please continue, ma'am.
So, we spend a lot of time talking about some vinyl windows too. I understand that. I'm a history buff. I love my history. I went through Lincoln's house and I was beside myself, okay? How much time was spent on this, I'm going to say landlord just to try to be professional, and the other silent owners, Mr. Mayor? What else is going on here? What about, okay, it's, what is it? What was that word you used? Oh, very sensitive about the history. I'm very, I'm very, very sensitive about Brandon and the others. I'm very sensitive about the people I don't even know, like the lady that lost her leg. I'm very sensitive about the fact that he didn't even show up for court for these things. And what about the nine-one-one call? The day before? I called nine-one-one, right? About some stolen stuff. Misty answers the phone. She cannot make the cops. Tell me why the cops can't make somebody give me my medicine and medical supplies. They can't make a rich man take care of his building so people don't die. And then it wants to hurry up and hurry up and do it over in this little block party and raise money. Nobody wants to build that building for y'all. We want them lives back. PTSD, be able to sleep, be able to, I can't even walk to the grocery store without my heart sinking and wanting to just, the anger in me I've never felt before. What you guys have let happen and you did, you can sit here and you can hide behind your desk and I can't answer your questions, but you all knew there were problems. You knew it. You've known it for years. The building was condemned years ago. Slap some paint on it, give a rich man it, and here you go. Love you, Brandon. Love you guys. You guys?
Thank you.
Surely, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
And don't thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please. Ma'am, please refrain from yelling out in the audience. Thank you. Please, ma'am.
So, my name, my name is Jessica Knowles. I'm from the Second Ward. I had a whole speech prepared for you guys instead of just speaking randomly, but my only concern is why is it the minute that we get up here to speak that the string gets cut not once again? That's not a glitch.
It's not.
Two, just because funerals have been happening and the demolition is almost done and we're not out front, just know we're out watching still and we will be back every week like clockwork until justice is served. No peace. My last, how can I, how, this goes off of what he's saying, how can I even get in contact with my alderman because she's been missing MIA for the second week in a row? With no explanation at all. But on that good note, after I did bring it to the city meeting last week, I was able to get my son's artwork back, but that was thanks to Tim Kelly, not anybody else.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon, Davenport.
I apologize, ma'am. I couldn't hear.
Diane Salmon, Davenport.
Thank you.
Last time I checked, this was America. We're supposed to have free speech, not just a little bit of time here and there. I'm thankful to God that Judith is my alderman. You people should be ashamed of yourselves, the way you talk to her, the way you tried to dismiss her, all of you. I am.
Please refrain from yelling in the audience.
I am absolutely.
Sir.
You guys are cutting into my time. I am absolutely appalled.
You'll get your time, ma'am.
I am absolutely appalled at the way when she tried to say nay to something, you tried to dismiss her, the way you tried to shut her down.
Ma'am, please stop.
I am, I'm speaking to this gentleman over here. He is a part of all of you. She has a right to say what she thinks, what she feels like everybody else. The lies that are being said about her is ridiculous. In my community, she has reached out to us. She has been transparent. She has been extremely helpful when nobody else has. I grew up here. I love this city, but I am ashamed that people are coming from all over the world and they're going to see this tragedy that should not have happened. You people could have gone out there and you could have, a young man on his graduation had to find out that they found his father's body. Did any one of you go out there and give your condolences? You could have gone out there. You could have.
Ma'am, if you yell out again and you say something like that, I'll have you escorted out. Okay? Sorry, ma'am. You'll get your time. If you yell out again and you say something like that, you will be escorted out.
Going out there and giving your condolences or offering water is not an admission of guilt. It is showing your humanity. Any one of you have, could have gone out there. I have lost both of my parents and somebody coming up to you saying, "I am sorry for your loss. What can I do for you?", means more than, "Oh, our hearts and prayers are with you." Go out there and do something. Show these people you care and quit hiding behind all the government bull crap.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hello, my name is LaShawna Dixon. I belong to, I always forget, the Eighth Ward underneath Mr. Alderman Tim Kelly. So here we go again, another week, and I don't think really any of our questions have been answered. So I'm agreeing with them, like y'all just are taking your sweet time with the answers, but I got a few little facts that I want to just go ahead and get to, okay? I want to know how a alderman lives in Bentendorf but is a alderman for Davenport? And I will leave my email so y'all can get to me about that because I am, I don't know. Also, under the leadership of a city administrator, we had the flood in 2019 that cost us $3.5 million to clean up and the businesses had absolutely no help. And is it because people didn't die in the flood, but people died during the building collapse? Is that the only reason why you're helping businesses now? Also, I find that we have two, a husband, a wife.
Ma'am, please be careful about personal attacks.
No, this is not a personal attack. These are all questions that work in the same department together, making a, and I know in certain places, a husband and a wife cannot report to one another. This is not a personal attack. This is a question, how does that happen? Also, I want to know how is the covert relief money being used to pay for things for the building collapse? And my, my question is about the video being cut. That's already been asked. I don't understand why this, because the meeting from last week is nowhere to be seen. It's not on YouTube for us to read, for, for city members to review. And that, it goes up any other week. So now we've just stopped putting the videos up on Facebook because we're down here asking questions, doing our, being human, wanting to know what, why, and what are we doing? Again, if anybody feels like this is a personal attack, it's not. These are just questions. I will be happy to leave my email with you so you can get back to me on why this is happening, especially why somebody lives in Bentendorf and is a Davenport alderman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
James Woods, Eighth Ward. I do want to thank the aldermen that were at the Ward Three meeting last night. I thought we had very good constructive conversation. I know it's not an Orthodox thing, but I would suggest getting as many aldermen together. Maybe we can talk to Shawna at the fairgrounds. Aldermen only. No one else needs to be there. Maybe we can have a big roundtable discussion like we did last night because it was constructive. Two weeks ago, I addressed this council and I said, where do we go from here? I want to know when the, when a building is under structural repair, is that landlord told to continue with renovations or has he given any guidelines? Because I have a feeling, most of you don't know, on May 24th, in those affected apartments, that 10 out of those 12 apartments had granite installed. Do anybody know how much granite, how much granite weighs? We added over 3,000 pounds in an affected area that was already under structural repair. And our city inspectors didn't tell this guy, stop? Does it, does that make sense to anyone? We have a building that is crumbling, but we let this idiot add 3,000 pounds to the building when it's already under structural repair. There has to be guidelines. You guys can put yellow stickers on the door saying, hey, get out of this building, stay out of this building. Maybe we need to get an orange sticker when they're under structural repair, stick it on the building because we're dependent on that landlord, to be honest. He has not been. There has to be some kind of guidelines to put forth to make them accountable. He caused that, not you guys. You guys didn't tell him to do it. So I would like to see the inspection department slap a sticker on, hey, nothing on this side of the building, unless it's mandatory. I understand if there's plumbing leaking, stuff like that, but renovations, just so you can charge more for rent? That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Ross, Second Ward. Do we pay aldermen for not showing up? I think that should be addressed. So we're talking about the building collapse. Has anybody drove down Fourth and Oak? Just wanted to throw that out there. That building was hit over the winter and the foundations broke. It's a block west of the old Rubies on Cedar. The building needs condemned. I also want to thank the three aldermen that showed up. Speaking on, I came down here almost a year ago speaking about crime, still waiting on my meeting with you. Last night at 1:08, or this morning, 1:08 a.m., we got hit again in my neighborhood. How is it the same vehicle, the same blue SUV that is all over Facebook, Neighbor's App, everything has not been found? Who has the stop, you know, basically the, let's not do nothing about that six months? I speak with passion. I'm trying to come into the table with you guys, whether you guys want to think or not. I did have this conversation last night. I think it's something that needs address. That being said, why is there a chop shop in Third Ward that is not being shut down by the feds? I will be going with the FBI Friday morning as a federal whistleblower. The stuff needs a stop. We gave you time to resign. We're starting to dig in. I'm sorry, Mary or Marion, but the chop shop is why there is a stolen epidemic in Davenport. Just so you guys know, the 30 people that got vandalized, we're going to start walking our neighborhood. Don't try to stop us. We're going to take our neighborhood back.
Sir, be careful about threats.
It ain't a threat.
Be careful. Thank you. Thank you. Next, please, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you once again. I would just want to say, I don't know how many complaints you need, but I'm really disgusted how you guys cut the video again as soon as the public speakers start coming up. You're silencing our voice because you don't want the community to hear what we have to say and it's disgusting. Though I am sick today, I want to make sure my voice was heard, though I'm physically not. I am with you in my spirit, community, family, and those who are seated behind each person in the rows right now. As time goes on, the heartbreak, sadness, and anger isn't any better than day one because we have not yet got transparency and actual answers to the questions why the family of Brandon, Ryan, and Daniel, may they rest in peace. The other tenders and their families are displaced businesses and community. And actually, I'm thinking with the families that are displaced, I've become frustrated that they are in lack of actual help with both the city and statewide. They were told they could get. Some have been denied because they make too much. I have become friends with a single mother that fairly knew that the quiet, fairly knew to the quiet cities with her one-year-old that lived in the apartment and lost everything. She's been living, uh, hold on. She's been living in her car on a campsite because the shelters are full and yet denied, and she was yet denied because of the government claiming she makes too much. We as a community are the ones who actually are helping people, which we will continue to do because we actually love the people in our community. Places like the Red Cross and Salvation should be ashamed of themselves, which I can speak about personally because I was there today, and they don't care. They treated me very poorly and I was just there to help fill out applications and they treated me like I was scum on the earth. And they lack what people actually need. Another member of our community, and again, I will not say the names, said this is all she received from the Red Cross and Salvation. I received shampoo, one conditioner, one soap, two razors, two paces, two brush, and got $30 for a clothing voucher. I don't know about y'all, but $30 ain't enough. You can barely get a pack of underwear. Okay? How pathetic does that sound and is extremely sad? Shame on Andrew Wall, the city of Davenport, Red Cross Salvation Army. Y'all have to do better, period. We are the people and the people are united to bring actual change. This isn't going to go away until we see, along with full accountability to each person who has fought and preventable to a horrid, horrid, I can't say that word, and horrific event, and please get used to seeing our faces and my face, too. Thank you. Who sent this statement? I just want to say her name. Her name is Katie Stewart and she's a Davenport resident.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, some of you guys aren't going to like me, but that's okay. I don't care about that.
Ma'am, please at the podium.
My name is Renee Simmons. I'm Fifth Ward. Tim Kelly is my alderman and he has done a splendid job. I have worked with every council member on here, guys. I have worked with Cory, Tom. I have worked with Nicole, Rich.
Ma'am, please.
And I'm going to tell you, they are good. I have been dealing with these guys for years. I have way back to Philly, Arlington, put it that way. So that's how deep I go. I can call Tom. I can call Brian Hire. I can call Rich. And I can find out.
Ma'am, make sure you try not to say names.
I'm sorry. What I need to know. So anyway, for you guys to just blast these guys is just totally, totally wrong. I'm sorry, you guys. I'm, I'm so bad for the people who have lost their lives and their family members. But I know with my mother, I know that one person can change, change the course of the world and that was Jesus Christ. It only takes one person. And so, you know, we as a community have to come together and stop throwing out conjectures and, and, and all of these accusations about people when you don't even know the truth. There's stuff there in the media that is false, so false. But have you guys ever sat down and talked with these guys? I call. No, you are. If I am, you are. But I'm not going to get into that battle with you.
As I say, ma'am.
You want to talk to me, you talk to me outside. Yeah, you talk to me outside. But I have dealt with every last one of these. Ortiz on some property of my sons on the western side of Davenport. You know, I just had a house torn down by Oswald because I said, hey, it's a problem. It's going to tip over. It's going to fall. He swept in and got it done. Chris Hout. I can, I can name names because I know these people.
Ma'am, please don't use names.
I'm sorry. I can, I can say names because I know these people.
Yeah, but we ask you to not.
And so, and so anyway, I just want to say to, to these guys and to the council, thank you guys so much. Kyle comes up and down my street. Kelly, constantly on the phone. So if somebody can't get ahold of their alderman or their older woman, that's on them. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else, Miss Pugh? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Or adjourned? Have a good weekend.